And, um, as requested, we got a couple of things we want to go over, um, today. So, we do appreciate you guys for coming out. And Nate's gonna, um, go ahead and, um, open us up with prayer before we get started.
Father God, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity to come to do the city's business. We ask you, Lord, to keep us safe, keep us safe tomorrow, as all of our kids and all some of us to our school back. Lord, we ask you to bless us and let us have a wonderful school year. Help us do your business, your name is prayer, amen.
Alright, so the first thing we want to get started with, and I get you guys handout. We want to just go over, um, I want to go over a few things with everybody. I know we've had a lot going on and there's been a lot of confusion in certain areas of our city. But, just trying to, as Nate said, do a little housekeeping to get all of us on the same page, to hopefully help everything flow a little bit smoother from this point on. I know you guys work really, really hard, so hopefully this will make everybody's jobs easier. So, the first thing is, is, um, it's a responsibility of mayor and council and department heads. So, we did pass that out. And the reason I wanted to go over that is, um, for one, um, the administrative, um, branch, that's, that's the mayor's department. He handles that and the council handles, um, the legislative branch. And there's been a few situations to where, um, I think we as council members, we get too involved in things that we shouldn't be doing. You know, and my, and myself for one, and I can even give you a few examples, hopefully Reeve doesn't tell on me. But, I can give you a few examples of things I shouldn't, um, be doing because it's the mayor's job. So, what we want to do in the future, if there are some issues, we want you guys to make sure you're reaching out to the mayor. It always needs to go through the mayor first. Um, I know at this time, I am council president, we know that could change it in a moment, but it's okay to CC me on an email as well as, um, Alex, because everything flows through her department. So, we would ask that you guys, please, don't email us all together. Don't send us group text messages and so on and so forth, because it's real easy for us to try to jump in and take care of problems when we forget that's, that's not our job. That's the mayor's job. So, we want to make sure the mayor is doing, um, his job and we're not trying to take over. Hope y'all also want to make sure you guys are being taken care of as well, but just want to leave the responsibility where it's at. The next thing, um, that I have, um, that's in front of you guys is how to get a purchase order issued. And I lost mine. Can I just add it? Is that what's in front of y'all? So, we want to make sure everybody knows the correct, um, way to get a purchase order issued. And Alex, you want to, um, just go over that, try to just scan over that document a little bit? So, we all know how it works.
Yes, ma'am. Whoever is assigned in Springbrook needs to...
Can you use the microphone?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, whoever's assigned in Springbrook to do purchase orders will do the purchase order. Um, it will then flow through the department head and this is before any money is allocated and any promises are made that we will purchase items. Sandy in our department, she checks and verifies the requisition, um, and assigns a purchase order. I sign it and then it goes to Portia. And Portia will email you the purchase order number and a copy of the executed purchase order. Once the items are received and you have them and you check them, you'll go into Springbrook, uh, and receive those items. And then we can issue payment once we receive an invoice. And we have an invoices folder that we check every day, twice a day, and it's invoices@silicacaal.gob. And that's the quickest way we can get somebody paid. And that way there it's not being delayed.
So, how, um, that's what I was going to ask. So, say if I needed something today, say something breaks in my department and I need to get somebody out here to fix it. What's, what's, what does that look like? What's the first step in some repair maintenance? What's the first step in that?
Okay, for repair and maintenance, um, we'll say the city hall, we contact Ben Baker.
Uh-huh.
And he goes and looks at it. For all our buildings, that includes the museum, anybody. Um, then Ben will call me, because sometimes he can fix it. If he can't fix it, then he'll tell us who to call. And then the department head needs to do a requisition for that. We'll expedite processing that, so we can get somebody out to look at the repair.
Okay, but the first step is always call Ben. He comes out doing evaluation and then we take the next course of action.
That's correct.
Alright, is that, um, is that a standard? Is that just something, is that a policy or is that just something standard we do as far as our city?
As far as I know, that's just something we do in our city, um, because Ben Baker has been here a long time and he's in charge of the maintenance.
Okay.
And normally, if Ben can't, he'll call Mike Whitstone from building services to get input from Mike as well.
Okay. Alright, and we may need to, um, we may need to get that typed up and just get that email out to everybody, just so we can know what the process is, so that way if something does happen, we don't, we don't have an issue of getting somebody paid if we didn't follow the proper channels, if that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the city currently is using a nineteen ninety-eight purchasing policy, um, which is no longer, um, valid, I should say, because everything references paper copies and we're all electronic now. So, that's something that, um, we'll try to have done, if that's okay, before the first of October.
And do we, do we already have something in mind to replace this or something updated that we can go by?
We do. We just need to sit down, review it, and then of course have the city attorney review it, because we would ask the council to rescind the nineteen ninety-eight version and implement the new, new copy. We can have the department heads review as well.
Okay, and you guys should have a copy of this in your, um, in your packet as well. And we can just decide on, I guess, once we take a look at this, we can decide on if there's something we want to update or change, which I think we should at least update it, if not change the entire policy.
Nineteen ninety-eight, some more time.
Alright, so, so my next thing, and I forgot to mention when I said the, the do's and don'ts of the council, um, I wanted to mention liaison assignments. I know, um, all of you guys have liaison assignments and everybody has their favorite, but I just want to make sure we're not confusing, um, the liaison assignments with, with advocates. Um, that's, that's really a big thing. So, of course, we do have our liaison assignments and we have to do better too. And I'm gonna, um, make sure that we do a better job at reporting from our liaison assignments during council meeting, because our job is to go to these department head meetings and bring the information back, which we haven't been doing and we need to do a better job. But it's not to, you know, go into these departments and basically try to manage you guys. You know, that, that's not our job. We shouldn't be managing you guys. Does anybody have any questions about the, um, the do's and the don'ts of the mayor and council? Um, how to get a purchase order issued, as long as how to, um, do maintenance requests? And I know Tracy, you and Steve, it's not really, you guys have your own little setup, but since you do, um, you are city employees and you do manage city employees, I just feel it was a quick for you guys to be here as well. So, do you have any questions about that? Do y'all have any?
I think you all have one.
And, and I'm gonna give an example too, because I, I brought it up, Reeve looked at me crazy. This is the example I have when I say I do things I shouldn't be doing. Say somebody calls me and they tell me that a tree is down. I, I shouldn't be calling Reeve. I should, I should be calling the mayor and he should be taking care of that. I shouldn't have Reeve running all over town doing all that, and I'm guilty of it. I, I really, I'm sorry.
I am too.
I'm so sorry for taking advantage of you. But, that's the type of things that I'm saying. Alright, so we'll go, since we don't have any, um, questions on that, we'll go on to the, um, to the next one, and it's number seven. Um, and this is, I have a, um, question that says, "Discussion that is necessary by city council president Nick regarding the planning department." Um, so I have some questions, because I know we technically don't have a, a planning director. So, um, and I know Mike, you've been doing that, right? You've been doing that job?
We've been volunteering for us for about nine years now.
So, that's what I wanted to ask you about, that since, like you said, you've been volunteering. And I know a few years back, we even talked about one point in time, I know I mentioned it, maybe just joining those departments together and there were some other things that were talked about. So, how are we, how are we managing that now and do? What, what do you feel we should, how do you feel we should be managing it? Since we don't have anybody in place and as you just say, you're volunteering.
May I interrupt?
Yes.
For, for a second. During the recent meetings and discussions with both Silicaca Planning Commission members and city employees, we have found areas that need to be addressed as they hold to help their processing run more efficiently. It is never the intent of the city of Silicaca to halt operations or progress, but the planning commission, this commission is a vital and very important part of development in the city of Silicaca. From our residence to commercial and industrial developments, we are finding ways to ensure that we are able to continue the wonderful work that they have accomplished over the decades with a few growth blocks. With as few growth blocks as possible, I am not prepared at this time to discuss anything further regarding planning due to ongoing research and alternative developments. Another future, uh, after another thing, uh, future would not be, uh, concrete if we brought anything in at this time. So, it is being handled. I appreciate the council for, like, to inform you as quickly as things happen.
And we appreciate that. Thank you for, um, giving us that update, Mayor. Um, but I'm talking about as far as the planning, um, the planning department upstairs. Who's, who's responsible for handling that? Because Mike just, like Mike said, he's volunteering.
There, there are certain things in the secretary's, uh, job description that provides information to certain, uh, boards like planning commissions. Yes, they have stepped forward and have volunteered over the years to assist. And to, I don't know what caused the, uh, rumors and everything else to bring this to this point. But it is an executive issue and we are looking at it. As soon as we get concrete information and get things set, we'll be able to come back to you. We do have a job description for a planner, but yet we have to set the pay rate for that position.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is that you have something in place to put somebody in place to be over planning and that way Mike won't be...
Well, I just plan that we do have a job description for a planner. We just have to set the pay rate for that position.
I think we're talking about two different things.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're talking about two different things, Mayor. So, um, what I'm, what I'm asking is, what is the plan? What plan do we have in place right now for somebody to be taking over, um, planning and code? Upstate, because Mike is, is volunteering, right?
Well, it was.
See, it's, it's so...
So, you're not volunteering anymore? I mean, where are we at?
Not until we got what was brought up at, and I don't want to get into any confrontation here, but the stuff that was brought up at the last council meeting severely affects the planning department. And they cannot operate without not being addressed. And that's when I decided and told the mayor that we're not going to volunteer until we have some sort of authority.
So, we need to find somebody to be, to do planning, because you're not going to do it anymore? I mean, that's kind of what we do.
Well, it's pending. That's what he was trying to explain. It is pending. That's something we're currently working on and we're not, it's not ready yet to roll out.
Okay, but it is something that we're working on, so we can take care of it. Because of course, we don't want people volunteering to do stuff that they're not responsible for.
Meanwhile, it can be delayed by time. We're considering updates that we need to approve to put something in place. Just the planning issues still need to be processed.
Yeah, we have definite pressing issues right now. And what was, was brought up last week or the last council meeting about inside engineering has got them dead in the water right now. Dead. And it's something that all of you up there are wanting for the city of Silicaca.
We can't reveal it in...
But we can't reveal it in a meeting like this. It's not revivable at this point.
Inside engineering. Alex, you want to address that? It's just a misunderstanding, you know, how that operation itself, of the pain of the engineers and all. But I think that would be pretty...
When I spoke with, it all goes back to, we received an invoice that was not, a purchase order was not done. Um, and we required with the building services department secretary, um, because I tried to discuss it with her. She in turn told me to, um, put it on the agenda and hung up on me. Um, at that time, I did inform the mayor. And that's why it was brought to the city council, because I still don't have resolution. I called Brian Cash to find out about the incentive, to find out about the requisition, and he asked to get copies of our agreements slash contracts, which had not come back to the city council since two thousand nine. And that's where it was left as of last council meeting.
Well, in our position, we just need to make sure that somebody's handling planning. That's, that's where we stand. And if you're, you said you've been volunteering to do it and you've decided to not volunteer anymore, that's what I'm asking, so who's, who's going to handle it?
Sure, it's going to be impossible for anybody to do it at the stage of this right now. Without an insight or an, or an engineer to review the process, it can't, it can't happen, it's dead.
But I thought we had the engineer, we just, we just reworked how we were, we were paying. That, that was the issue, us paying upfront and they pay somebody else and then they reimburse us at the end. That's what the issue was.
Understanding that this has been done since two thousand and five with the original contract, with whatever you want to call it, contract agreement. It was passed by the council at that time, that that's the way it's done.
And I...
We've never had a problem that I'm aware of of not getting paid. This was five, seven years before I even came to work with the city of Silicaca.
And we can go back and pull documents and see, um, each payout we've had and see the reimbursement outside of it, so there's documentation.
I would say so, because all the planning department does and all they've done in the past was, once the development was started, they signed the agreement and then we requested the open PO through the planning commission, which is a funded, it's funded in the budget, but it's one hundred percent reimbursable. So, basically, we're just spending the money. You're getting the money back from the, from the developer. And to my understanding, there's never been a problem and we created a problem, but there's never been a problem that I, that I'm aware of.
But I know, but according to legal counsel, that's not how it should be done.
Well...
There was legal counsel, we ain't got none of that life. That was part of it, but I just, you know, because like you said, it's been going on for a long time. And I think Alex didn't understand how it had been working, she's doing her due diligence. It's just, it's just a misunderstanding.
We did, but that's what he's saying. When we solved what we thought we solved, it created an issue, so now we're at a halt. That's what he's saying. But, and, and, and you're right, Jane, and that's why we're all here. Because of so many misunderstandings and we want to get the misunderstandings out of the way, so we can get on the same page. Because the way things are going, I, I, I can't, you know, I can't keep living my life like this. We're going to have to get on the same page. We all, we're, we're trying to get to the same goal. So, let me ask you this again, Mike, because you have been working on it and I know, um, you, you've done a lot of things and you've been volunteering to do this. What, what do you recommend we do? What, what is your recommendation? Because we have to have somebody to do planning.
Well, apparently, we've been doing something since two thousand and five that's been wrong since two thousand and five, so you're going to have to get a legal expert to figure out how to do it right, since we haven't been doing it.
Who do you recommend does planning, since you are not volunteering to do planning anymore?
No, that's, if he's not going to do it, then we just have to hire somebody to do it, that's the thing. Because people can't be volunteering to do work.
I agree.
So, Jane, what is our next step to make sure we have something in place? And what you guys are working on to make sure we have somebody in place?
We, we are working on something. We've been discussing things with Mike and we were working on something before we go, before we get out of office.
So, how soon do you guys think you'll, you'll be, um, ready to present that to the council, so that we can, um, discuss it?
I would hope by the next meeting.
Okay.
May, may I say something?
Of course.
On what you just handed out? What we're discussing now is executive, it's his decision.
And since you brought that up, thank you for bringing it up. This is why I'm discussing, because a lot of us, and I'm going to say us, are playing both sides of the fence. We're calling council members, telling council members one thing, and then we're telling the mayor another thing. So, now, here we are involved. And I don't want to be involved. And hopefully, by discussing this stuff and getting everything out and open, we can get on the same page. And then after this meeting, people, I'm going to say we, we'll just call the mayor to, to handle executive stuff instead of calling council members.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't call, I don't know if I've been calling you?
No, you don't call me, but you call Lee.
He's the liaison.
But he's your liaison, but not your boss.
I talk to him too.
But, we need to just make sure it's dealt, dealt with through the mayor. And, and I'm going to say this again, I'm not calling any names. We can't tell our boss what we are and aren't going to do. That's, that's why we're here, so that we can just clear the air, everybody's on the same page and everybody knows how this works. And believe me, I, I do want to make it easier. I want everybody to have everything they have. I want it to flow smoothly and we want everybody to be happy at work. But, we all just have to be on the same page. And if there are some misunderstandings, we need to know who to contact, so we can ask the questions and we can understand. But we're gonna all have to get on the same page, one way or another, all of us.
I think y'all are working in the right direction with what you're working on now.
And that's all I wanted, and that's all we wanted, was an update on what was being put in place, because from our side, again, Mike is volunteering, which he shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't have employees volunteering to do stuff. So, we, we do want to know what's going on, what's in place. What, how can we help make the situation better? And thank you so much for working on it.
I have a question for Mayor. Is everybody's Springbrook access fixed now?
They are.
Okay.
What'd they put back on, Alex?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as legal counsel for that agreement slash contract, Brian Cash said he's going to work with whoever needs assistance to correct whatever is, we're having a problem.
Alright, so let me ask this then, before we move in forward. Jane, who all need to be involved in that conversation with Brian Cash?
I'm going to take what you just said. Brian Cash is willing, um, and helping to help, um, the agreement, to reimburse an agreement.
Well, and Jane, I don't even know if this is a part of your stuff again.
I don't think so. I think contracts and agreements, you know, they were outs and then you guys.
But we want to make sure that, um, everybody who needs to be in the room is in the room, so they can take care of this. So, that way, once they work it out, it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, yeah. So...
Will you make... We can hear Lee for those three minutes to take notes.
Well, I think like you said too, let's just let the mayor get with who needs to be involved. And Mayor, you can see who needs to be involved in a discussion and y'all have that discussion executively and then bring it back to us next meeting.
That'd be fair.
That sounds good, Mike.
I think you need to have KPS involved, which is Jason Fonger and Jeff Stew, the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance and everything else we've done. He's done over a hundred in the state of Alabama, so he's pretty...
Well, that's probably somebody that we just need to, um, get with the mayor, add to the list. And thank you, because I mean, we do need everybody here. But like, again, we just want to make sure we get on the same page, get these things taken care of, so we can just start to smoke, flow smoothly. Alright? There any more questions about that, Don?
Is that why you want me in the middle and the center?
Nah, I ain't going to be in the middle. But I don't want you to think I'm picking on you either. I mean, we respect you, Mike, you do a good job, but we, we just have to be able to work together, so we can just get on the same page. But no, but I am glad you're in the middle. I wouldn't have had it any other way. Alright. Thank you guys. Alright, so the next, um, item on the agenda is number eight. Discussion that is necessary by council member Ashton Fowler regarding number thirty-six dash twenty-two-three. And I think, um, we all have a couple of handouts in our packet. I think there's three handouts in our packet regarding what Ashton wants to discuss. And Ashton, you have the floor.
Alright, yes, y'all should have all three copies of that resolution in question thirty-six twenty-two-three. You know, when we realized, what we realized, there was two signed copies, like we used to practice, standard practice of city council president signing two copies of every resolution that was voted on that meeting. Um, when we realized there was two different copies signed in addition to a third copy that was, Claire Blair, that was sent out, that everybody's aware of. We just have too many copies going around. There's signed ones, not signed ones, one that's been sent out, not sent out. And the one that we all received as our supporting documents back in July of twenty-three, you know, pre-meeting to review, was the one, the one of the three that was not signed. So, in all fairness, I recommend we can do it. However, time-wise, either tonight or next meeting, we're sending the current thirty-six twenty-two-three and either redoing a new resolution with a new number. And we can have either three, these three options. We can be presented and vote on, or come up with a complete new one if we wish. But it can be a group discussion, decide what we want in there and vote on it and make sure it's correct. So, we can have one document signed one time and in the record.
Alright, you done, Ashton?
Yes.
Alright, please, yes.
The thirty-six twenty-two-three that everyone says it was not signed, there was an error. There is a signed copy, it was delivered to banks. I have it. That's the original document. I did not bring it with me tonight. The other two were never seen by council, were never in the council packets. I've gone through all the packets and they did not exist. So, the ordinance that's in, in force is the original thirty-six twenty-three-three dated July sixteenth. I agree we need to change it. Great, fantastic, but I don't believe that we should use the names of positions in the ordinance and the resolution, because a position could give someone who the bank could not identify as correctly named, because there's no name associated with it, someone could represent that they're in a certain position and have signatory authority without possibly redoing signature cards. So, I believe the correct way to do it is to name the, to, to, to name the specific names of the individuals authorized. And then when we need to change that, we do a new resolution. I agree, I agree that it needs to be changed, because there is confusion. But the original document was signed, was in the, was in the, uh, record books and I have a signed copy of that. But it does make sense that we should make that change, in, in my opinion, to be by, by, uh, by person name rather than position name, which happened in later versions.
There's actually four versions of that resolution.
There are four versions. Four signed versions, where you...
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Alright, um, and I don't have a problem with that either. I just don't, I guess my thing is, I don't think we as council members, whether we're council president or whoever else, we should be going to the bank account to get a bank statement printed out. I don't, I don't think we should be doing that.
I'll say that. I don't think anybody should. That's what we have in finance.
But this is, let me finish. This is why I say that. Because everything that we need, we can request it in work session or we can request it to have on the agenda and it can be provided to all of us.
That's true.
You need to think of more careful wording then, because a bank cannot have someone who has signatory authority not be able to confirm that there's money in the bank account to be able to write the checks.
Yeah.
If you want to restrict access to certain, uh, additional material other than verifying balances or something like that, it needs to be carefully worded, so that it's not limiting the authority of the person who has signatory privileges from feeling comfortable signing an account and perhaps committing fraud if there's no money in the bank account.
But we're not, I, and I, and you're right, and maybe give him a...
Can we, sorry. Mayor, can I, can I ask, I guess the council is kind of saying the same thing. If we rescind this resolution, can you get with the parties that need to be involved to come up with, you know, like we said, the names and positions, if that was, if that's what we're all asking for in, in writing?
That's not, that's not...
As you know, uh, very much with all the...
Let's just, let's just...
Okay, well, hopefully, hopefully, I can finish saying what I was saying. Let, let me finish saying what I was saying.
Please.
Okay, you're right, and we do need to come up with the correct wording. But what I'm saying is, whatever that wording is, I shouldn't be going to the bank accounts, asking for printouts of bank accounts. I don't know if that's something...
Yeah, I agree.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
You need to make sure the money's there before you sign a check.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and that's, but that's provided to all of us, but we shouldn't be going to the banks with our, you know, I shouldn't be out there just saying, well, hey, I, I need to get a copy printed of this bank account, see what was spent on Thursday.
There should be certain reasonable access to confirm, to confirm that accounts contained funding necessary to support.
So, it sounds like what we want to do is a new resolution.
Yes, just as all the other supersede the prior resolution.
Yeah, and we want to just make sure that whatever the access is, is limited. Are we all in agreeance with that?
Yes.
Not restricted, but limited. You can find the right words.
Okay, alright, and you can help come up with that. Alright, so we're all in agreeance on that, right?
Yep.
So, when do we want to, um...
I think we're ready for the next meeting.
Until we get one ready to vote on.
We can't, we can't vote on it until the next meeting anyway.
Can we legal with pending?
That has, that has nothing to do... It has nothing to do...
Yeah, we can change that.
But it has nothing to do with us putting, um, a resolution in place.
And it may be reasonable to access some of our banks, to ask them what type of words we should use to allow reasonable access to balances as opposed to access to extended financial documentation and printouts and things like that.
Are you getting that, Alex?
Yes, I've already spoken to all four banks and three of them, um, it's not an issue. It's only the one bank and I'll get to that bank and we'll figure it out.
Alright, and we just want to make sure we keep it standard. Everybody should have the same thing. We shouldn't have to do something extra for a different bank. Alright, and we just wanna make sure we keep it standard. Everybody should have the same thing. We shouldn't have to do something extra for a different bank. Ev- everybody should be able to accept the same thing. Alright. So we're done with that? When we're in agreeance, we're gonna.
Perfect.
Alright.
Do you need something, Maff?
I said, why would we not use the same equal garbage in the, in the resolutions that has been used for twenty and thirty years?
Because we're gonna change it. Right? Isn't that what we just thought it?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so number nine, discussion that is necessary about animal shelter manager Stephanie Engel regarding a budget amendment for the animal shelter totaling one thousand three hundred from G and L oh-one oh-dash-five-four oh-dash-four-two-five-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-zero to zero-one-zero-dash-five-four-zero-dash-four-two-zero-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-zero. Alright, Stephanie, you ready?
Yes, so I'm requesting that thirteen hundred, um, be amended from the original line item, which is travel conferences and expenses, and moved to my, um, office and operating budget line item, because from that line item is, um, where I need to purchase animal vaccines. And we are inundated right now with animals, and we cannot do anything unless I can buy vaccines to move them and control that population. So I am just sweeping toward the end of this year with that line item, so that thirteen hundred dollars would allow us to buy needed vaccines and some things over there for the animals.
Okay, well, that's.
So you won't need, you won't need to travel when you're gonna spend that money instead on vaccines?
Alright, and then, um, also too, Alex, we talked about, um, doing, oh, go ahead.
Before I get there, um, I wanted the council to know that we put a, uh, paper copy, thanks to Lee, um, he caught the math error. And there's a revised one, would you email that, yes, sir? In your packets, um, paper copy.
Eight hundred dollar difference, just math error.
Alright, also there was, um, you said that you and either Melanie or, um, Sandy were working on making sure she had access to her, um, her donations. We were putting in a separate account.
That's correct. Um, we got with the auditor, Erin, um, and explained to him what the issue was, because we cannot increase her budget. And some of the council did confer with that, um, wanted to talk with them as well. Um, right now she has fourteen thousand eight hundred five dollars and seven cents in donations.
Okay.
However, it would work the same way as the judicial admin fund. Um, before she spends any of that money, she's got to come to the council and get permission.
And that's it? But she can have, but she has.
That happens, and she does the purchase order, we'll give her a specific, uh, general ledger account. She can do the purchase order. Then we will write the check directly from this account, not the general book.
Have you talked to Stephanie, um, about this yet, Alex?
Um, we've tried to meet with her a few times. She was sick all last week. Um, she wanted to meet this afternoon, but I could not because of the briefing we were in this afternoon.
Okay, well, this is exciting. So Stephanie, what it is, they've set you up a separate bank account, and hopefully you can get something scheduled so she can let you know how to access it. So you will have direct access to your, um, your donations.
Okay, so I guess my only concern then will be, um, you know, the difference in time from when I initially put in a PO, you know, or tried to move money, right? From amend line items.
No, you're just putting up something.
This is, yeah, this is, this is separate. You still have to come to the council and get permission to access the money, but this is a, it's a whole separate account and a whole separate, um, thing from your, um, your regular budget, right, Alex? Yeah, so this is your donation money that you were asking about how to access it. So they've made it easier to where, if you need something, say you have to buy, what, dog food or pet food? Say you wanna buy pet food. Let me, so, so does it have to come before us?
Because you guys are the controllers of all the money, even though it's a donation?
Just like with the Margaret City Cemetery.
Margaret City Cemetery is the same way. Judicial Admin Fund is the same way.
But just request a purchase order for what you need. We approve it within two weeks, and then you've got the money.
Correct.
Well, let me ask you, but what if something comes up and she, something happens? Cause I know we have a lot of animals and we didn't buy enough dog food. Is, will she be able to access that?
She can do an emergency purchase order from the budget, and then we would come to you and ask you guys.
And then we would just reimburse her budget from the, um, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
That make sense, Stephanie?
Yeah, so I could do that. I mean, I'll just be very honest. I mean, I'm, I'm over on my animal control line item quite a bit, because we've, you know, processed so many animals, you know, adoptions and so what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, what am I gonna do to, you know, to offset that amount? I don't understand.
The animal control officer?
No, no, that, just the animal control, the stay neutered line item.
She's over on it. She went over what she did.
As long as her bottom line is good to get, then she's fine. Her bottom line is good.
So maybe when you and Stephanie meet, just make sure, um, she understands that, and she understands that she does have act, direct access to that money so she can get what she need.
Correct.
And then also too, make sure she knows about the, um, the entire budget. Cause I know you're looking at it as a bottom line, but she's looking at it as the line item. Because there, apparently there's some other line items that she's over in, or she hasn't used, or may not have to use. Okay, so the next thing is update from animal shelter manager Stephanie Engel on building air conditioning unit HVAC personnel and animals. So, um, we do wanna get an update on that, because I know there was an issue and then some miscommunication about the air conditioning unit at the animal shelter. So if you would, just give us an update on that. Um, tell us what's going on now, and what is the plan to fix it?
Uh, well, as you know, the temps are climbing again, so the air conditioning or the air handway outside is starting to, and I, I don't know, like, if we have, like, a freon leak, or they, you know, some people say freon, some people say, you know, the coils are corroded, you know, whatever. Um, but it is warming up again in the conditioned spaces. So the space that we typically work in or administratively we work in, um, you know, is eighty-five to ninety right now. Kennel spaces, you know, are climbing back up, you know, mid-nineties, upward a hundred again. So I mean, it's, I mean, when I talk about a steam bath environment in that kennel space, I mean, it's, it's, it's a little rough in there. I know we can't, you know, do anything. I know there's issues with louvers. I know there's, you know, the elevated units out back. We've got one that's frozen. Um, I was out a couple of days last week when Ethan Kraft came by, um, but we've had a couple of different contractors out, um, that have recommended different solutions. So one is to replace the unit, um, others are to try to repair it. Um, we were looking at, you know, trying to save money and just repair it, um, and just get through the season.
Well, I know, and this is another one of the, another one of those things that everybody got involved in, and it seems like, um, we still have the issue. And I know Jeff, if you wanna chime in, you can, cause I know you went out there as well, right? So do you wanna, can you help explain to us what's actually going on? Because we, we had somebody to go out to check the unit, but according to me, the unit wasn't broken. The unit didn't need repairing.
When I went out and looked at it, and I just, so a little background, I have twenty-five years' experience of heating and air.
Please pick up, Jeff, so we can hear you.
Yeah, you get on the us, you guys pick up.
I can, uh, I, I have twenty-five years' experience of heating and air. I went out, I just did a quick temperature drop on it. It is, it is functional. It is working. It's not kind of bad. It, like Mike said, it may have a refrigerant leak, but it's not something I don't, I don't believe it's something you need to throw ten thousand dollars in.
So, and we sent, we sent a couple of professionals out there as well too, and we've gotten a few different, um, actors, but we need to figure out how to take care of the problem we have now. So Mike, you've been out there and looked at it as well?
On occasion, several times. I mean, essentially, Jeff can back up since he has twenty-five years' experience. The front of that building, anytime you introduce people into a room like this one, you have to compensate the BTU for how much heat you're putting on. In some cases, extra heat gets put off in here. But when you add these animals to these rooms that weren't intended to have animals, like in front of this shelter, that makes the unit that was intended not to be done, used for that undersized. So that's part of the problem. In the back, when the shelter was redone, there was no air conditioning at all back there.
But is it designed to have air conditioning, or it's not? So it's not designed to have air conditioning?
The front was.
You can't, you cannot air condition the back of that building.
Okay, so we, we just wanna make sure that's understood too. So it, it wasn't designed to have air conditioning?
And let me, and let me preface what I said. When I went out there, I got a fourteen degree drop. And traditionally, we look for sixteen to twenty-two degree. But I went out there on a Saturday while there were a dozen people walking dogs. Doors open all the time. Air's going in and out. So that's not a bad drop. I need to go out there on a, you know, Thursday and, and Wednesday afternoon when there's nobody there. And, and do a temperature drop on it and see what it's doing.
Well, we have to, we, we're gonna have to figure out something, because it is hot. I mean, we do live in Alabama, but we can't, we can't just be guessing at what's going on. And I'm not saying you are, cause I know you have twenty-five years of experience, but we need to figure out what the actual problem is and then come up with a solution. That's what we need to do.
Jeff would. I do agree that you need to have somebody look at those elevated units in the back and see what's going on there. And see about fixing those louvers, because that's supposed to be an air exchange system.
So in, in the louvers, that came up. So we know the louvers aren't working. So Stephanie, do you have, um, have you had anybody to come out and look at the louvers?
May, may I say something? That is a minor repair. They should not need a price. Call somebody to fix it.
Okay, well, do you have anybody in mind?
I mean, one of the heating and air people she's used, it should be fine. And if it can't be repaired, replace it. I mean, that's a terrible harsh environment out there. Things don't last.
Let me, and how long have you known that it was just, and I'm just asking, how long have you known it was just the louvers and it's just a minor fixed line?
Well, I've known the louvers are broke, have been broke for a little while. The last one was propping it open today, which is, which would suffice, but that, that back where the kennels are, unless you have it engineered, it can be air conditioned, but I don't think you could afford it.
But it also wasn't designed to be air conditioned back there, right?
It's supposed to be tempered, a tempered environment, not comfortable tempered.
Yeah, there's done. Economically, you cannot air condition that environment.
Well, he's saying it wasn't designed to have it. Okay. So Stephanie, can you, you think that's, um, something you can task to call, to get somebody up there to check that, so we can make sure you guys are taking care of as well?
Are we not contradicting ourselves? We just said the, the board, the mayor?
Yeah, but I'm contradicting myself today because we're here because of this. This is why we're here. This is why the meeting is set up the way it is. And I know people don't like it. And this is what I hope the plan is. And I, you know, and I hope everybody thinks it's funny. It's really awful to me, because like you said, when you came in, you feel like you're in kindergarten. I feel like I'm a school teacher. So that's why I'm involved, because we can't get on the same page and we keep calling everybody who can't fix it. So the goal today is, with all the, the back and forth and all the issues we've had, talking to everybody, we can, we can get all these issues fixed today, and we don't, we don't have to do this again. That's, that's why, I mean, that's why.
It'll be, hon, Tiffany, can I speak freely?
Yes.
That's a little scary.
Go ahead, Mike.
It'll be good.
Somebody should have been called to fix the air conditioner. If that person said it needs to be replaced, another person should have been called and not told what the other person said. And see if you got two opinions of the same.
But we also asked for three different quotes too. So that's what we asked.
Again though, Tiffany, you're not gonna get three quotes for repairing an air conditioner. People, people don't have time to get to what they got to now.
But we do have three quotes.
You got three quotes to replace.
But part of the, part of the confusion for me anyway is that there's so many different components to this. So we have the air exchange in the back. We have the conditioned areas in the front. Then we have louvers. Then we have air controls in a panel, big panel. And apparently, somebody that was out recently said, well, I think, you know, the controls are defunct. You need new controls. And I'm just like, well, what is it? You know, we've got all these different opinions, but nobody's really.
And you're right.
And then, right, and then, you know, and then some of the, some of the quotes come to me, others, you know, I think the vast majority have gone to Alex. And so I sent her an email. I said, look, I, at this point, this is so confusing. I'm not sure what's going on with this. I'm not sure if somebody's issued, like, a scope. I don't know. Maybe that's something you could help me write, is a scope. So we get the same.
Mike, you're overbuilding in services, right? Is that something you can help Stephanie with to get taken care of, so we can make sure that stuff is repaired?
I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Well, I'm asking, could you please help Stephanie so we can get this taken care of?
Mayor, what's your thoughts? Hold it. A new building, how about that?
Yeah, that's all the problem.
Can I say something? I, I, I know this isn't my lane, but.
Okay.
This has been a problem since before Stephanie ever got here.
I know. It has. It really has. We have to fix it now.
From the HR point, we have lost countless team personalities, personalities aside, these are horrible conditions to work in. I get the building wasn't designed. I get all that. But it needs to be fixed, and somebody needs to own it. My husband over here last summer went to Home Depot and bought an industrial fan, because we felt so bad for these folks. It's gotta be fixed, please. Thank you for doing this and bringing it back.
Yeah, but, but that's, it, what we just talked, I know, but she said thank you. And it is, and, and we do wanna get it fixed. So that way, go ahead, Mike.
Um, it's not that the building is not designed for it, okay? It could be upgraded and it could be done. I just think you're gonna have to have an engineer do that though.
Do we need an engineer to fix the louvers? I'm probably saying that.
No, you don't need an engineer to fix that. I'm saying if you want to condition that space and do it differently, you're gonna have to get an engineer, because I mean, one of you up there, I know that is families in, in the heating and air, and the one behind me is. It's going to have to be extremely overbuilt for it to function properly, because.
But in order to fix what we have now, in order to get the louvers fixed, and to make sure the air conditions that we do have now in the spaces that are designed to have air to be working properly, is that something that you can help Stephanie task?
Honestly, I would call the people that did the controls for us when we remodeled and get them to come out and check everything. Issue them a PO, come check it. And if the louvers are not functioning right, get them to replace them, or tell, get them to tell her it needs to be replaced, and then just get them replaced.
So again, are you gonna help Stephanie take care of that?
Is that in your dog description, Mar? I don't want us to get fed up for possible potential grievances.
I think we're.
It's other related tasks.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Jane. And again, we're all playing for the same thing. We just wanna make sure everybody's taken care of, because who knows, Mike may need a dog to be picked up, and Stephanie will be the call.
Well, wait, go get the dog. I don't believe in this.
Alright, okay. Alright, so it looks like we went on to, we already took care of number eleven. Alright, number twelve, discussion that is necessary to approve setting a public hearing to the zone property located at five sixty-two West Fourth Street from its current MX dash two limited mixed-use district to institutional I or one district for August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four at six P M. Alright, who's, um, is this the, um, thing from? Is this the same thing from, um? Oh. Do you have anything you wanna say about this, Ms. Kay? It's for, um, August the twentieth at six P M. So we're, um, yeah, to rezone the property. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Alright, number thirteen, update from Solothwaite City, um, council meeting from March fifth, twenty-twenty-four. By city council treasurer, um, Alexandra Lambert, action that is necessary to approve training expenses for business license clerk Erica Doby and city clerk. Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to attend the University of Alabama certified municipal revenue office three hundred level training course online from October sixteenth through eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. The registration fee is two hundred thirty-five dollars per person. Total estimated expenses for Doby and Lambert are four hundred and seventy dollars. City clerk treasurer will be available if needed.
As you're aware, Erica Doby resigned. We have recently hired Anthony Giddens. Um, I was just informing the council since it's already approved that we would like to put Anthony Giddens in the place of Erica Doby.
So we're just swapping out the name?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that, um, will you guys still have time? Does that mess with any of the registration? Do you have to just call and change the name on the registration or?
That's all we have to do is, is email Ms. Melody. She'll take care of it.
Okay, all right. Any questions on that? Discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding incentive payments. Ah, I didn't even know that. Um, no, I mean, I, let's go ahead.
So when we increased the sales tax, when we did the incentive payments for the four, um, businesses, um, which are on item fourteen W S, we started paying them at the four and a half percent instead of the three percent, which is what their agreement says. We conducted an internal audit. We got ahold of Brian Cash. Um, and Brian Cash, um, asked me to come up with a spreadsheet in front of me, which we did. And we did a good copies of Brian's letters, um, saying that he's going to email everybody, um, the hard copy letters and let them know that we will not be either sending a check because they owe the amounts in red, or we'll send them an amended amount until the city gets their payments.
And then there was one on there that, um, he talked about, I think it was for the, um, the HUD.
Yes, ma'am.
So we were not gonna be able to, um, take all of our money back from them at once because they still have to pay a bond or something on with their payment. So.
No, no, ma'am.
What was it? I'll say it wrong.
Well, that's what he thought. Um, so that's what we were gonna look at. Um, he confirmed this morning that it's not an issue. They should have the funds to do what they need to do. Um, and do not issue them a paycheck this time for the incentive and to recoup the rest of our money the next, um, quarter, which is in September.
And we've made sure that all of, um, everybody that needs to be on the old tax percentage is on that. So we correct all the ones that, um, were mistaken.
We have, yes, ma'am. So, and all the letters from Brian Cash are attached on our fourteen work session.
Okay. Y'all have any questions on that?
No question.
All right, number fifteen, um, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert.
All right, that's us.
Oh, I thought it was. Discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding earmarked funds.
Okay, after working with our consultant, um, and Walter with Piper Sandler, um, we went back and sat down, um, and discussed how we came up with our number, um, for the percentages. And there was a mathematical mistake. Um, we were budgeting off the nine and a half percent for the earmarked money when in fact we should have only been using the four point five, which is what is owed to Solocaga. And each council member has a detailed explanation on the spreadsheet called clarification on spreadsheet for earmarked funds. Um, at this time, all the departments have received their full funding for the, um, funding up to four million. And everybody is now in black. If you look at the long Excel spreadsheets.
And it also shows the balance in each account too as well, right?
It also shows the balance on each account. And then the page after that, the little paper, um, it says running totals after, uh, initial. Fifty percent is now going toward general obligations reserve and the other fifty percent is going towards special projects reserve. Do you want me to read the total so the departments are aware?
Did everybody get a copy?
No, ma'am.
You can't, hold on. Laura, please explain to Laura what it is. Just.
I was, I was making sure I was reading this right. So is that how much we overpaid roughly?
No, that's how much more we got.
So remember, we were thinking that we haven't made it to four million yet. And thanks to Melody and Walter, they showed us how to calculate it. And so we are, we not only have, um, reached our goal, we've exceeded it.
Okay, good.
So that's what that is. So everybody's got all of their money and that's what's in the account now. And that has gone to half, has gone to the general fund. And the other half has gone to the, what is it?
Special projects reserves.
That's been split into.
Good deal.
And then each month, that's how it'll go from four.
But we're gonna hit our original expected five point seven million dollars ish in annual revenue total.
That's what is predicted.
Yeah.
You get it, Laura?
I'm good.
All right. Any more questions on that?
The general ledger, just so everybody is aware, is not incorrect. It was just this spreadsheet that was incorrect.
But this is what we were worried about too. So I'm just glad, um, thanks to Melody, we're so fortunate to have her.
Did you want me to read the total so the departments are aware?
Yeah, I think everybody's gonna be excited about it.
Debt has eight hundred thousand, paving six hundred, reserve three hundred thousand. The police department is positive, two hundred nine thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and nine cents. The fire department is in the positive, a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Recreation is in the positive, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty cents. Capital, infrastructure both have three hundred thousand and the street department has two hundred thousand.
So I think this makes everybody feel better. We were stressed out about that. So now everybody's reached their four million and you got what you gonna get. All right. Is there any more questions about that? It's, um, four fifty-seven. We're gonna go back to the, um, we're gonna go back to the top of the, um, the agenda because we do have a couple of, um, special guests here and they were requested to be here at five, so we don't wanna, uh, keep them waiting. So Ashen informed us that the Little League isn't gonna make it, but he's gonna go ahead and give them a, um, I said?
No, you're good.
And he's gonna go ahead and still give them a shout out.
So, uh, you know, the Solocaga U triple S A recreational league, your parking rec, eleven U state champions we recognized, I think, two meetings ago. Went to Baton Rouge and showed out for us. They did a great job, played in a hundred plus degrees. I know Steve was down there the whole week. They were on turf fields and those dudes were eating a hundred ten degrees. They played nine games throughout the week and ended up six and three. Um, they were the world series runner-up and they even took it into the last game, what you call the if game. So they had to beat the last team twice and they beat them once four to three. And in the final, final championship game, they lost four to three. And, and the team unfortunately that won it all was a travel ball team. Um, these, these kind of things and tournaments you can play to play if you wish. And that was one of the, one of the teams that did so. So for a handpicked, voted on all-star team from a recreational league to get that far is one of the first teams to go, in my recollection, first that gone is, is great. So congrats to those guys and what they've been able to accomplish in the future's bright because they're just eleven years old and not even out of the regular yet.
All right, so that's, um, good. So shout out to them. I hate they weren't able to be here, but we still wanted to, um, congratulate them and wish them luck with what they, um, what they're doing now. All right, so and thanks, Ashen, for the update. So number two, we have, um, up, discussion that is necessary by drug task force district attorneys that you get is regarding the, um, fiscal year twenty-five budget totaling eighty-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars. It says showtime five P M.
Um, it's always good to see you could be here. Um, Solocaga has always been instrumental in this drug task force. Uh, do a lot of good things. I do want to point out some things because the toxic cash drug and violent crime task force, you have violent crime, like everybody task force is able to assist. I can think of three, you had the bank robbery last year, appeared to the south, assisted in that and laid the case on the guy who robbed the bank. And you've had two homicides, one on Fluker Street and one on South Main. South Main is in February, Fluker Street back in November. And task force Black Aggie, who's here with me also, he assisted with that along with your policemen, investigators, Christine Kilgore, Chief Tipton's here, Mike Robertson, the commander's here with you as well. Uh, Solocaga, like I said, you've always been with us. Last year, the request funding was eighty-two thousand nine hundred forty. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five is the same amount. We'll be requesting. And, uh, certainly hope you can, uh, in the budget, uh, keep us in there. We'll keep doing good things throughout the county as well as here in the city of the violent crime and and obviously drugs are still a major, major factor in law enforcement.
Well, we thank you so much for coming. Um, we do appreciate you guys and everything you do. And, and I think Alex told us you were coming early because you want to be able to make it to our budget meeting. So, um, we do have it already passed Alex's mind, so it can be considered as a part of our budget.
Okay, well, I appreciate you having us. We, I do budget too. I know how that is. Y'all are a lot bigger one, a lot more people asking than I do. But we appreciate you considering this. And like I said, it's what's always made it work is everybody being in and to have all the agents and all the agencies working together. It's really, really good. And there's a big fight out there in law enforcement all the time. The drugs are a big, a big part of it. And you see violent crime, that's always about as well.
Do any of you guys have any questions for Mr. Giddens, considering that he won't be at our, um, regular budget meeting? I guess now's the time to ask him.
I appreciate you coming, Big. It's always good to see you.
Thank you, customer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. As always, I've been with you many times. You got any questions? And I see Chief over here, Rondell, certainly, working any way we can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is number three, update that is necessary by John Merrill, Merrill Wagner Engineering Incorporated to enhance the Solocaga Police Department and emergency service they provide to the community. How you doing tonight, Mr. Merrill?
Great, Madam President. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and, uh, give a brief update. On the, uh, twenty-third of July, we had a meeting and several of y'all were able to be there. And I wanted to just share some of the highlights of that for your review. And it's always good to be with each and every one of you. And I'm so appreciative of the support that y'all allowed me to give y'all and the encouragement that you provided to me. And we are really excited about the projects that we got underway. What we captured in the meeting on July twenty-third was basically just an overview of the things that y'all like to see done and the things that you'd like to see addressed as far as the council is concerned, involvement way, where we'd like to go. Probably the main thing we want to introduce right now is just making sure that everybody knows that one of the things that we had attempted to do, and several members of the audience were here, we talked about this before a few months ago, was a request from Senator Tuberville to make sure that we enhance law enforcement with the chief and with the efforts that we're trying to improve overall performance and response time. And in doing that, we wanted to have four new vehicles. Uh, as it were, with some things that happened politically, um, that are really to the benefit of the community, which had been talked about regarding healthcare and hospitals specifically. We were not able to pursue that at this time, but for fiscal twenty-six, our request to Senator Tuberville and the guarantee that we have received from his office is that we're going to have five squad cars, two S U Vs, and the enhanced finger, digital fingerprint equipment, which will put us, uh, ahead of most communities in the state of Alabama, the four hundred sixty-four municipalities around our state to make sure that we can do what we need to actually apprehend criminals and before they are released or processed further, we'll know exactly what we can do and what we need to do related to them with that equipment. So we're very excited about that. But if you look at the list here, you'll see a number of things. That just happens to be one of them on here that we wanted to make sure was brought back to the attention of the members as well as the public. But the stormwater drainage issues, uh, the bridge work that's necessary in the Lake Howard area, a storm shelter, either integrating it to the existing facility that you're currently having under construction. The ADA compliant sidewalks that are so necessary, that's been talked about for a long time. The traffic signal out of County Road five eleven, uh, in Peyton, then the fire, uh, the fire box, uh, baby operation that so many communities are adopting now and what we'd like to see with the fire service here in town, animal shelter, clean up the wetlands area and thermal imaging, uh, cameras are so necessary for firefighters in order to make sure that when they're in an emergency situation, that they can rescue those people, that they need to be able to identify but may not be able to see through normal observation patterns. One of the other things that I was reminded of is I was ready to leave the office today to come down and be with y'all, is that we would love to be able, at no cost to you, in addition to the contract we've already entered into, find a project, an A trip two project that we could submit on your behalf because it's been more than four, almost five years since you've successfully committed a project that has been submitted after its design and to have it funded by the state highway department. We'd love to do that for you. And we think that the sidewalk projects can do that. As a matter of fact, some of those projects will be able to be done without a local matching being required. So we want to make sure that we're doing what we need to, to fully support the council and your work for your constituents. Tell me if you have any questions, if there's anything I can address at this time.
I guess we can start, um, with Laura. Um, Laura, just go down the road. Laura, you can go.
I don't really have any questions. I think you've pretty well covered everything and I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you so much, Laura.
You mentioned at the top, uh, Cruse Valley Medical Center. Can you explain more about, about, uh, that project?
Yes, actually, uh, Councilman Pearman, the, um, the mayor and Alex and some of the other team members of the council, as well as the chief executive officer at the hospital have worked together to help to secure a grant from Senator Tuberville that has become one of his top three priorities as far as the entire state is concerned for resources that are necessary to provide better and more, more different kinds of healthcare opportunities than currently exist at the existing facility. And we're very excited about that and very excited that Senator Tuberville had made that a top priority for his request patterns through the appropriations committee for fiscal two thousand twenty-five. The amount is undetermined. There is an amount. We don't want to report that amount because it has not been guaranteed by the appropriations committee, nor has it been reconciled with the House.
Thank you very much for your good work on all these things.
Yes, sir. It's my honor to work on your behalf.
All right, I'm gonna work with you.
Nate, Ash, do you have questions, Nate?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good to see you again.
Nate, I mean, Ash, do you have any questions?
Now that everybody's answered, that's great. Thank you for the work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. Listen, let me, oh, I do have a question. So the.
Now this surprises me.
The thing you told us, we need to find the grant, we need to find and get it submitted. What's in that line of that?
Okay, anything that we're going to do together, when we're trying to work to make sure that any grant application is submitted, we'll make sure that you're always submitting it on time and all the Ts have been crossed and all the Is have been dotted. So for the one that we're talking about with the law enforcement activity with Chief Rondell, or what we had talked about earlier when we were together, that will be done in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five. The submission date is yet to be set because that won't be done until the new Congress is sworn in on January the third.
I thought you said we need to find something new.
Oh, we're gonna keep finding things new.
So are you gonna find the new stuff just based on our recommendations?
No, ma'am. We'll come back with some recommendations based on what y'all want to do because we're not ever gonna lead you. We're just gonna walk beside you and make sure we're going where you want to go.
I think we like.
And you're gonna suggest things where there's the most likelihood of being able to.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We want to make sure that we're properly matching with the appropriate person as well. Whether it's Senator Tuberville, whether it's Senator Britt, whether it's Congressman Rogers, you have three champions that represent you in Washington. We want to make sure that we're working with them and we're submitting the appropriate projects for the appropriate person based on what it is you'd like to see done. For example, Senator Britt is concentrating on infrastructure in the last two funding cycles. And so we need to make sure that we have a project that we want to submit that requires federal resources, that we would go to her office. So there's a, a number of things that, that we need to make sure that we're given proper attention to. And also not forgetting the state resources that are available through the highway department as well as legislature's direct appropriation.
Thank you. We have any questions on?
I do.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Merrill.
Thank y'all so much. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you, y'all. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next on the, on the, um, agenda, discussion that is necessary by Carolyn, your executive producer, forensic interviewer of Palmer Place requesting ten thousand dollars funding from S P D in Morgoney. Um, and I, oh, you're here. I thought, um, I don't know why I thought Rondell was doing it. Come on. Come on now. You can come up here if you guys are together. You both can come to the podium. You got cookies you wanna pass out?
Yeah, I was gonna give you just one.
Okay, thank you. Those are just some of our, uh, statistics from last year. So, um, as you said, uh, I'm Carolyn Durham. I'm the executive director with the Talladega County Child Advocacy Center, also known as Palmer Place. Business is really good enough. Um, and, um, I don't know how much anybody knows about the Child Advocacy Center and I don't want to bore anybody with too many details. Um, but just to give you a little bit of information about what we do, um, we work with child victims of abuse and neglect and we work hand in hand with the police department, the, uh, Department of Human Resources and the District Attorney's Office to investigate these reports of abuse and neglect in Talladega County and again with the police departments, the local police departments in the county. And the Child Advocacy Centers, the history of the centers is that they were established to create a more effective approach to investigations of child maltreatment, to, uh, create a less traumatic approach for the investigations. So, this is a multi-disciplinary team approach intended to reduce the times the child was interviewed during these investigations. So, the interviews are conducted in a safe and comfortable environment and conducted in a supportive and non-leading manner. We still use this approach today that was, uh, that was created back in nineteen eighty-five in Huntsville, Alabama, and is used nationwide. Um, so in Talladega County, when a report is received of abuse or neglect, Palmer Place receives those reports from DHR or law enforcement. And then a interview is scheduled for the child to be brought to Palmer Place. And then law enforcement and DHR meets together at Palmer Place for the interview to be conducted. And as a team, we work together. Everybody watches this interview as it is being conducted so that it is done one time for this child to be interviewed one time so that it doesn't have to be done over and over and over again as it used to be done. So, um, after the interview is conducted, the team, which is again, law enforcement, DHR, the interviewer, the staff of Palmer Place and possibly the DA's office, will decide what happens next in the investigation, if there will be extended interviews for any reason, if counseling services will be provided, if there needs to be medical examinations or other services provided for the child. And then after a further investigation is completed, there will be another meeting at Palmer Place for it to be, for, for us to further decide what will happen, if there's enough evidence to proceed with prosecution or if other services will be provided for the child or the family. So, in two thousand twenty-three, as you see there, a hundred and eighty-two forensic interviews were conducted and a hundred and thirty-nine counseling sessions were provided at Palmer Place. Eighteen percent of those interviews involved children from Solocogga. Since January of this year, we have already conducted a hundred and thirty-four interviews and a hundred and twenty counseling sessions. And this has been the pattern over the last few years. It just continues to increase over, at, over the years. So, in addition to the free services that we provide to the child victims, we also provide programs to the community to promote awareness and prevention of child abuse and neglect. We are a nonprofit organization and as I said, all our services are completely free. We operate on funds from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, also known as ADECA, and the Alabama Network of Children's Advocacy Centers. These grants, however, are not enough to sufficiently provide for our needs for our budget each year. And we have been told that the ADECA grant is going to be cut as much as forty percent in the upcoming year and maybe obsolete in the next two years.
Oh, wow.
So, we are facing absolute severe cuts to our budget. So, we are approaching or trying to find new funders for our center. So, we are going and, and talking to the municipalities, the county, and seeing if we can find new funders for our...
You're talking to the municipalities that you serve?
Right, within the county, absolutely.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. So, the, um, the funding that is provided will, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I thought, I need to say what I need to say.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to let you know that the, the funding that will be provided will be for the program services that we provide for these children, the programs that we provide for the community, the operational costs and for fundraising expenses for our center.
Okay. Um, if Chief Rundell is, if he gives ten grand out of his earmark funds, I don't see where I could stand in the way of that. I agree with it.
Any, I have one question, um, Carol. So, is this gonna be, um, is this a one-time request or are you expecting to, um, ask for this for it to be returned to ask for annually?
Uh, we are going to try to ask for this annually from the municipalities in the county.
So, is this something that, let me ask this. So, is this something that you're requesting now you want to be considered in our budget?
Or... Our original plan was to, to ask for this to be added to the budget for the next fiscal year.
Okay, okay.
I don't see any problem. Add, add that to discuss to, um, to put on the document for the budget discussion.
I'm very pleased to see you leadership there and to see y'all moving it forward with children only being interviewed once. That, that means a lot, I know, to families.
Yes. I got one more question. Do you have a formal, um, proposal? Is there something else you have to the amount that you're requesting? Alex, oh, my bad. Go ahead.
What I wanted to do was give ten thousand, um, and it comes this year and have y'all pick it up from, you know?
Okay, so, but I still would, um, I still would be from her what, um, I'm about to ask. Yeah, yeah. I need, we were, um, in order to be considered, I would need a formal proposal. Okay. With the amount that you're requesting and just basically what you just told us, what you would use the funds for. Okay. Let me, um, I've got another.
I have a proposal for fiscal year twenty-five already.
Okay.
And then twenty-four, um, now.
Okay, well, sounds good. We look like we should have just been...
Good deal.
Oh, okay. All right, so, um, one more thing, um, since Rundell is requesting, um, that he wants to pay it for this time out of his earmark funds, is it on the agenda for this to be decided on tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
I do, I sure do. Um, are you guys okay to consider that tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Next on the list, um, is number five discussion that is necessary by Walter Lewis, managing director, Piper Sandler and Co. regarding SMP global ratings total at thirty-five thousand six hundred fifty dollars. And Walter, you're gonna, um, come up and explain to us what this is for. Twice in one day, Walter.
It's awesome. I had a good time today. Uh, yes, I can explain it. Standard Pours actually conducts the ratings for the city and, um, in their process, you know, they go through all the things that they do in order to rate a city so that you can sell warrants into the marketplace. So, what they do is they do their analysis and then that analysis will tell you where you stand from a credit perspective. Right now, the city is rated of, uh, A-plus, which is a really good rating. Um, there are several categories and that category is, is a very good category for the city of Solocogga. It's been that way for the last seven or eight years, you know, in terms of the rating. And it's a lot that goes into that process in order to get there and, um, um, so, so in this process that we've been going through, uh, the city is proceeding forth or is anticipating proceeding forth with the warrants, they're, they're gonna do their analysis. Uh, but for whatever reasons, if the city, if this transaction does not close, then this engagement letter here is signifying that the city, um, has engaged them to do the analysis. They've done the analysis, um, that the city move, not moving forward, uh, with the transaction doesn't have anything to do with the analysis. The analysis is done and all they're asking is, is the city make a commitment to them that, that once this analysis is done, whether it closes or whether it finishes, uh, at the finish line with the transaction, that, um, they're entitled to their compensation.
And this is a standard practice in getting, um, a bond issued?
It is. It is. And typically how it works is when you're working on a transaction and you're moving forward there, this particular cost is not a cost to the general fund of the city. It really comes out of bond proceeds as a cost of issuance, you know, there. And that's how we will size the transaction if we get to that point, you know, there.
And this is the call that is going to take place tomorrow, right?
Yes, that's what I'm gonna do.
So, um, we have to decide, um, this is on the agenda tonight to, um, be considered. Um, like Walter said, this is standard process for getting a bond issued and there is, um, I think the mayor, myself, Alex, um, who else? Steve, and there's Calvin Miller. I think that's tomorrow.
When involved?
Uh, well, when has not been involved and we've had two training calls with two prep calls so far and those have been the people that have, um, put on the call. And tomorrow is the call to ask your, um, interview. So, that's what's on, um, the agenda tonight to be considered. And if we do decide, um, not to do this, then we don't have the interview and if we don't move forward with the bond. Any questions about it, y'all?
Yes, sir. Yes, please. Yeah, and, and let me say this, um, for the city over the years that I've been working with the city, uh, this has been a formality where the city has executed this document on behalf of Standard Pours. And, um, you know, so it's something that has been done and it's, it's not a, out of the ordinary.
Thank you, Walter. All right, so we'll, um, move on down the agenda. We're gonna get back to number, um, sixteen, discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding fiscal year twenty-four budget by department.
So, as everybody's aware, um...
You got the microphone, Alex?
No, it's way over there, ma'am. I can talk louder, though.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, as everybody's aware, purchase orders and requisition close on Friday, nine August. So, anything that they need has to have a requisition in this system before the ninth of August in Springbrook and it has to be approved. Um, on attachment sixteen work session, um, it lists the balance of each department in Springbrook. So, for instance, P and L, their balance right now is two hundred and forty thousand plus. And that includes payroll. So, anybody that, you know, lays money on the title, we can use it for capital purchases as long as they have items ready or anything else that the council needs necessary.
And Alex, does this, um, does this exclude anybody? Cause I know this doesn't pertain to parking rights, right?
No, ma'am. They get an appropriation check as does, um, Ms. Tracy at the library.
Okay.
And they'll get all their money.
All right. So, what about, what about Amber in the court? Is her stuff, um...
Amber has forty-four thousand eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents left. Um, that doesn't include the judicial admin fund, which as you're aware, we're adding that into a separate account and, um, Judge Taylor Ford is, uh, submitting the documents for his budget for fiscal year twenty-five, so that'll be included in your twenty-five budget for that fund as well.
All right. So, let's just repeat, what's the deadline again, just to make sure everybody heard it and we're all on the same page?
Friday, nine, August, at five PM.
Do you have any questions about this?
Um...
Hold on, we got a question.
I have a question about account balances. Does that fit in this or is that another?
So, when you go to the next page, you didn't have any questions on the, um, the warrants. On the next page tells you, um, it's a little color coded. The ones in yellow are not balanced because we're in a new month. Um, and today's only day six of August, so the ones in yellow aren't balanced yet. The ones in white are for this month. The ones in red, um, Melody is still working on, but you'll see she made progress on the general fund checking account. She's already balanced fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-three.
My question is, looking at some of the larger balances now that we've, we've consolidated some things, are these funds protected by, for example, SEDAR's insurance or such that the city's not subject to loss of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per account?
Yes, sir. They're all in sweep accounts, have the little banks.
Okay.
And the money is fanned out to other banks.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then two, um, guys, Stephanie is, this is, she has actually two priorities now and the bank accounts is one of them. One is, um, help...
Give me Melody.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Stephanie. I'm sorry. Trying to give you a new job. Melody. So, um, she has two priorities right now and one of them are the bank accounts. So, she's been working on these as well as making sure we get all the audit stuff, um, turn, well, she has three, audit stuff and bond stuff. So, and this is part of getting a lot of them. And if you have any questions, um, about these banking accounts or the progress of them being reconciled, we can re, you can reach out to Melody and she's, um, really good at explaining stuff. Any questions?
I'm, I'm good.
All right, so that's all on number sixteen. Oh, and also too, I forgot, um, Laura and Lee, in the stuff, the package that you got from Walter, there's also that day you guys got bank account information, but we should get updated information. That's from the day we had that meeting, but you guys didn't make it to pick up your stuff. All right. So, number seventeen, discussion that is necessary by Internal Police Chief Rundell News to apply for the Edward Ryan Memorial Jack Fund in the amount up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for block cameras. There is no city match application due August ninth, twenty twenty-four. So, um, you just need our permission to apply for this grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you mind giving us a little, um, oh, well, nevermind, you just told us what it was gonna be for block cameras?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the, in case anyone don't know, block safety cameras, uh, have license plate recognition on them and, uh, before I go any further, with the blessing of the mayor, I have already included ten cameras in the police department. I have already included ten cameras in the police department's fiscal year twenty-five budget. Uh, what I am, that covers the ingress and egress of the major thoroughbys of the city. What I want to do with this grant is to, if we get, or to get it, is to totally encompass the city. Now, in Talladega County, the city of Lincoln has, um, Talladega County itself just purchased two, not gonna say what they are, and the seat of Talladega is looking into it. The Bank Rabbit here in South, the reason that we were able to follow this guy all the way to the casino in Mississippi through other agencies is because of these cameras. I want to protect the citizens of Solocogga. We need them.
Where, where did the cameras go?
They go on poles.
Oh.
So, you, you'll see, I mean, you, you know what you're looking at, but as you go by, we will be able to know when you come in, where you go, where you been. It reads your license plate. And like I said, the mayor tasked me with getting ten of them and adding them to my budget anyway. When this grant came available, I want to encompass the whole city.
Okay, you guys have any questions on that?
Drop what you've got, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, number nineteen, discussion that is necessary by Internal Police Chief Rundell News to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Solocogga City Schools and the Solocogga Police Department for school resource officers. Um, I have a question about this. Why is it a, why is it a MOU and not a contract?
I have agreement on it.
I have, um, mine up to say that mine says...
Mine says agreement, too.
Well, mine's, number nineteen, mine says MOU. It's like a memorandum, memorandum...
I think your reference, number eighteen?
Eighteen, you skipped eighteen.
Oh, I skipped eighteen?
Yes, ma'am. That's agreement. Yes, ma'am, that's agreement.
Nineteen, memorandum. Yeah, that's why I was, okay, alright, so number eighteen, I marked one of, discussion that is necessary about interim police chief Rondell Muse to enter into an agreement for substance awareness and detention services between the Sol- Solocotta City School and the Solocotta Police Department. So sorry, I'm back up one.
Okay, uh this is something that we've done continuously throughout the years, standard procedure. But now that um we have always come before y'all for permission to do it, and we're just continuing on.
So nothing's changed?
No, sir.
Nothing's taken away, nothing added?
No, sir.
Okay.
How do how do y'all implement, um so how do y'all implement this awareness? Like, what do you actually do?
Well, it's to keep contraband or anything like that out of the schools, keep the kids safe. Uh of course, the school officials accompany of us. And um we just make sure that there's nothing there that shouldn't be.
Okay, so you just go through and just do random?
Yes, ma'am, we lock searches all down yards.
That's what I was, okay, alright. So now back to number nineteen, discussion that is necessary by interim police chief Rondell Muse to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Solocotta City Schools and the Solocotta Police Department for school resource officers.
It's the yearly thing to uh contract with the school with the resource officer, Harry Brown. Nothing's changed, same thing.
Where are we at with finding additional, that's been a big question, finding additional officers? You know, the the hopes and dreams of having one at each school, but I know we'll take one at the time now, so is there any?
At one point in time, when the state was providing funds for part-time officers in which they are cutting that out, that was a possibility. However, we are seven down, and as we fill our ranks, we'll get somebody in as soon as we can.
You're just trying to fill your patrols and all that that you have and then you'll address SRO stuff?
Yes, sir, until then, as we've always been doing throughout the years, we'll have Officer Brown in. We'll get patrols to help supplement where we can.
I've seen the rifle on the truck as well, look sharp.
Did you like it?
Yeah.
I haven't seen it, yeah, you're talking about for the SRO?
Uh huh.
Still haven't seen it.
It's down there, ma'am.
Alright, okay, any more questions on that, y'all?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
So um speaking with Dr. Osborne from the Solocotta City Schools, um we did add um something to the memorandum of understanding for the SRO. Uh the Solocotta Schools will reimburse the city for any and all training and or conferences that Harry Brown um attends. Uh this year, they um reimbursed us fifty percent, but next year, they've agreed to a hundred percent.
Wow.
Wow.
So I just wanted to verify, we did change that in the contract, it might just be an oversight on the cap, on the cap.
Thank you.
Well, maybe we know about that, boss.
Thank you so much, and thank you um Tom for always, you know, your ability to work well with um with everybody. We appreciate you. Alright, so number twenty, discussion that is necessary by interim police chief Rondell Muse regarding the purchase of OCR three-six-oh capture kit with floating licenses for investigation totaling thirteen thousand two hundred eight dollars, funding from SPD from earmarked funds.
So I knew y'all tired of hearing from me, so I'll be real quick. Remember when the incident happened at the church, when one of our officers just got into a gun battle? Okay, state came in that night, sent down a piece of equipment, totally twenty-first century. What it does is, it allows the jurors, anybody else to actually see that crime scene as that detective does right then and there. There is no other, no other cameras like this at the section of the state, Mobile, and Montgomery. Want to bring this to Solocotta and help uh us with all of our investigations. And of course, we'll help other facilities too.
I'm sure it'll help in court cases as well.
Very much so.
Alright.
It's like watching N C I S.
Any more questions, any um additional questions on that, y'all?
No, ma'am.
Alright, Lauren Lee?
No, it's just a great idea.
Okay, number twenty-one, discussion that is necessary by interim police chief Rondell Muse rec- regarding the purchase of four portable radar signs totaling thirteen thousand four hundred seventy dollars, funded from SPD earmarked money.
Okay, the signs on Norton, you've seen on the radar signs, since we put them up, they have significantly uh cut down speed on Norton and accidents. Now, as my friend Reed can tell you, when I bought those, it said portable. They ain't portable, I agree.
They ain't slow downed, but neither, cause we got four, wait, that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, we'll get to that later. But anyway, four portable radar signs about this big, we can put them in hotspots around the city. And that way, like, make no use when in the hotspots, the mayor uh tells him about uh over here, South Norton, or anywhere. They're twenty-five pounds, they'll do the same thing, they'll flash blue and red. I like to buy four of them.
But you said they're they're portable, but they're not portable, so will these actually be portable?
These will be portable. The ones on Norton weigh sixty-five pounds, solid metal.
What are they, attack, what are they, permanently in the ground over there?
They're on poles.
But we can remove them if needed, or are they all hardwired in, or is it one system?
It would take, I know it's so powerful, but it would take Reed, somebody else in a bucket truck. Okay, with with these right here, you join in the car and go. Like Harry Brown once put one down there at the school. I talked to Reed about that the other day, and Reed's like, okay, we could do it, but.
He could do that by himself if he has one of these and just go.
That's correct, that's correct, gotcha.
And that's the exact cost these totals I'm looking at.
Yes, sir, that's the exact cost, for forty.
Alright, okay.
Alex, I have that in my packet though.
Which one, sir?
Nevermind, Al, thanks.
Alright, so are we done with number twenty-one? Alright, number twenty-two, discussion that is necessary by interim police chief Rondell Mu- Muse regarding the purchase for six stopstick kits totaling three thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars, funding from SPD earmarked money.
These are critical tools for safety and effectively ending high-speed vehicle pursuits, protecting both officers and the public. If you remember not too long ago, there's a Oxford chase of money all the way from there, and it was Solocotta that stopped them safely with stopsticks. Of course, as you expand them, you have to replace them.
Are those those things you roll out and they fight your tires?
Yes, ma'am, that's them. And we have uh, we haven't replaced any in a while because of funding, of course. Uh I like to use the earmarked money to go ahead and bring us back the full stops.
Good.
Any questions on that, y'all? Number twenty-three, discussion that is necessary by interim police chief Rondell Muse regarding the purchase of police vehicles, each vehicle with total fifty-one thousand, funding from SPD earmarked money. Um on this one, um Rondell, is the fifty-one thousand including um striping and computers?
No, ma'am, you have an, you have an exactly out of my list of total cost of everything. Now, the fifty-one thousand dollar trucks, I was able to find some a little cheaper, forty-five thousand's the new number. I wasn't able to get that to Alex before your meeting, my apologies.
So this fifty-one thousand is forty-five thousand now?
It's forty-five thousand, it's, I did get it to you?
They have it, it's twenty-three W S in your paper package.
Twenty-three W S?
And that has the breakdown, total cost of everything.
I've seen it too earlier, I did. Twenty-two thirty, that's twenty-three. Oh, twenty-three W S, I got it. And this is um, so the forty-five thousand isn't? What's what's the total, because um?
Where?
The total for two vehicles?
Uh, it's it's not on here, though.
Okay, outfit, one vehicle is seventy-nine thousand, three hundred six dollars, six, seven.
And that's for total outfitting?
Yes, total outfit, or upfitting is what they call it now. One hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, thirty-four cents for two vehicles, which would leave uh me with less than, I don't know, less than ten thousand dollars to go back to the general fund.
We appreciate you.
I have a question.
Anywhere I can help.
Hold on, uh.
Now, I know some people wonder about why buying trucks, so let me tell you. I filled up here in Solocotta, I went all the way down to a convention in Orange Beach. I drove all week, I drove back to Solocotta, and I still had sixty miles to go.
You said they get six hundred miles to the gallon?
Five hundred and eighty-three when you fill it up. I got twenty-four and four miles to gallon in that truck. Now, our explorers right now, and they had to verify this, they don't pass a gas station. They stop at every gas station. Try to save you some money.
My question is, on this list, I just wanna make sure I understand, I see it now, so on this list is how much everything costs for one? And then it's, okay, and then this is a total for?
Yes, ma'am, I optimized everything.
I just wanna make sure.
Does this, do these have all the equipment on them, where you gotta keep the engine running twenty-four by seven?
What they got, and what that is, is these have what's called a police idle, okay? So it idles, yes, it does, at a lower level. Now, I'm glad you said that, there is a piece of equipment out there that you can add to these vehicles where you don't have to keep it idle, but it can keep all your computer system going. The reason you don't, and and you're right, but the reason you don't see that right now is on here because you needed this tonight, and he couldn't get your quote to.
At the ballpark, what do that, what would that cost?
Uh about six thousand dollars.
Yeah, now Brandon preserves the life of the vehicle for years.
Yeah, you got ten left.
Hold on.
Yeah, but I was giving it back.
But what about, what about, can those things we put on the cars we already got?
Yes, that's additional, that's additional funds, yes.
We we should find that money, cause that would really save the vehicles.
Yes.
Can you look into that for us to see what's the total to um get those?
Put them on the newest vehicles.
Well, well, hold on.
Yeah, but especially.
Hold on, I'm I'm speaking out of turn, because somebody else would have to put them on there, right?
But I'm just trying to see if it's possible, though, is it possible to put them on there?
It is possible.
Okay, so can you um get that number for us? Cause I think that is something that we're interested in, in having and knowing, and that would uh prevent the cars from having to be um on all the time.
And I totally, ma'am, I totally agree with you and Mr. Perriman, I talked to Ms. Lambert about that. Uh I just recently found out about that piece of equipment, I wish I'd have known it from the time done. I agree with you.
Alright, so the next question.
Oh, go ahead. Um does this bring you any question to starting a take-home incentive program for the officers?
No, ma'am, it it don't, but what it does do, well, yeah, two vehicles, of course it will. But what it does do is it'll help me as far as morale for some of our senior officers. Because what I wanna do is, until we officially sit down and discuss with you a take-home program, me and my liaison have been discussing that a lot, and he has a lot of questions about it, and with the mayor, of course. And uh but this would totally help morale within the department.
So we're keeping all the current vehicles, we're adding to the fleet, we're not.
That's correct, that's correct. And if Mr. Merrill comes through, burden in hand, you know, I can't count on that.
So right now, as it sits, as far as really don't turn off, cause you're still seeing.
That's correct.
And that'll still be happening?
No, if we get this piece of equipment, Miss Perriman, Miss Nixon, then we'll be good.
Requesting, requesting.
I'm sorry, yeah, I said it out of turn.
Requesting, chief.
I'm sorry.
Alright, so um I got another question.
I want it too, okay, say it, Cam.
And this is um also on the agenda to be considered tonight, right, Alex?
No, ma'am, because of the press talk.
That's, that's what I, okay. Alright, and um are we good with these cars still being there in two weeks?
Okay, and I'm glad you asked.
Cause I know there's first come, first served.
Since it's how I do anything for my city, I had to beg this guy. Now, I know it's, you know, I didn't make any promise or anything. What I did tell my boss over there was, I was gonna try to get him to work with us. So right now, there's a, as you say, verbal gentleman's agreement for them to be there. Course money talks, whoever shows up, I walk out later.
So would we consider this an emergency to go ahead and?
If they're gonna, if they're gonna go away, it's.
It's gonna happen anyways, so why not do it tonight?
And it's gonna, and it's gonna go away in the Constitution.
Okay, so, so we're all in agreement, that we wanna?
Absolutely.
Alright, so Alex, can you get that written up so it can be asked to be considered tonight? Alright, okay, thanks so much for that.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, um next on the list. Next on the list is discussion that is necessary by municipal court clerk Amber James to refund five hundred thirty-six dollars to Robert Azro V for, what is that? Eromus payment accepted, payment should have been sent um to district court. Amber?
Your turn.
This number three.
We didn't accept it, it goes straight to the checking account, it's at the bank account, is what it does. It's actually not supposed to go till two in the morning, and don't know why. I even called them, they don't know why this one transferred to two in the middle of the day. It wasn't even, it hadn't even been twelve hours from when he made the payment.
Alright, so this is something we just need to just fix and go on, just reimburse it?
Yeah, they don't know why it changed to daytime instead of, it's usually two in the morning when it transfers.
I got a, I got a weird question, so with that account, do y'all electronically refund those? Or would you have to just cut a um check and give it to the person?
Well, we had an option to electronically, uh they would reimburse him everything back, but the accountant didn't want to do it. So this, then they'll just cut this, so then doing it this way, then they cut the check. But he loses just the fees, it's all, he don't give it back.
Okay, alright. Y'all have any questions on that?
No, ma'am.
Alright, number twenty-five, update that is necessary by Solocotta Parks and Recreation. Lauren Lane to update special event date for Fall Festival from T V D to October twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Hey, Lauren, how are you today?
We're just basically um changing the movie night that was originally scheduled to a Fall Festival, and due to football schedules that we've recently received, it's necessary to move it to the October twenty-six date so that um it's during less popular football games.
Absolutely.
So we're gonna have him in Alabama plays. Alright, you guys have any questions for Lauren?
Thank you for doing what you did.
I'm gonna cheers one more.
Oh, I can't see today, and I have my glasses on, I can't see out of it. Discussion that is necessary by Solocotta Parks and Recreation, Lauren Lane totaling ten thousand. It just all it said. Just says discussion that is necessary by Solocotta Parks and Recreation, oh, Lauren Lane totaling ten thousand funds from P and R earmarked money, but it doesn't say what it's for.
It's for the lighting equipment, so as you know, um Churchill Highlands is vacating the space. They've agreed to leave some of their lighting equipment, which includes thirty-six LED lights. I won't worry you with um all of the details about those, but um they're very nice lights. And they tend to cost around twelve thousand dollars apiece, and they're allowing us to purchase thirty-six for ten thousand dollars along with a generic lighting board, so it's a very good deal, and will drastically improve the quality of events we're able to hold in this space.
Thank you so much. Alright, number twenty-seven, discussion that is necessary by Captain Sam O'Vee to purchase one two thousand eight Subten popper truck from Williams up here, it is totaling one hundred twenty-four thousand. So um. Okay, so um Sam, I know you're here to discuss this, so we went over um, we went over some of the stuff that um Nate sent in, Chief Oz did send in. And one of the um, one of the proposals, it was how much money you wanna go ahead and, I'll let Lynn explain it.
Uh the key is, is since, since the proposal for rolling two fifty-three included everything and specified every item that would bring it up to required standards?
That's correct, uh the two fifty-three was what we felt was the minimum that we could put into that truck and put it on the road uh from Williams.
And since that was an all-inclusive price, it seemed like rather than break it up into a separate fund that would be used to try to build something that constituted all those things, that we should just approve that that package, that proposal.
Like I said, there was three options there, I believe it was from, it was from, my goodness, I have the list here. I believe it was from two fifty-three to two fifty-nine.
Yes.
Which, which was a few different options that we had. Um it just gave us some additional safeties and additional flexibilities with that extra funds.
Two fifty-nine is the same price.
So what's six thousand dollars to give them?
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so I got a question, so but that, um so they would just, we would agree to do that, and they would just um issue us a purchase order, and we would just pay them that amount?
That's correct, and they spit us out of the truck within, I think it was ninety to a hundred and twenty days, I believe, and then we'd have a uh functional piece of equipment.
Okay, and we just pay that um money directly to the vendor, correct?
That's my understanding.
And but that, that truck, to you, seems like something that would be a very serviceable investment. The, I mean, the price is so low and the need is so great.
It it is a bit of a fixer-upper, and um the the base price reflects that, but like I said, it's a twenty-year investment, and that would be a, that is a pretty modest investment. but like I said, it's a twenty-year investment, that would be a, that is a pretty modest investment, uh, in the grand scheme of things that we would like to, to, it's not a Facebook marketplace buy. Uh, it came directly from, uh, it's been under the control of that, that manufacturer for, since two thousand eight. They, they've, uh, they loaned that truck out, but it's always come back there for service.
And we know-
And, and they're right in our backyard, so if there's a problem, we, uh, we do that. Like I said, they'll, they'll spit us out a very nice truck for, for that amount of money.
So Alex, when you go and, um, write the resolution to change, um, for the cars, can you change the one for the, um, pumper truck as well?
It's, it's two fifty-nine, correct?
That is what we would like to have.
And that's what we are very glad, your two fifty-nine.
Yes.
So we can go ahead and, um, consider both of those, um, tonight and we'll take a little recess and give you time to get those prepared. You say yes, ma'am? Alright, so I do have, um, one more thing I would like to, um, add, and I wanted to ask Jane, since Jane is here. Um, and I wanted to ask you guys to, we don't, do we have a social media, um, ordinance or anything in place? Policy? So has it ever been, is there one that has been considered or has it ever come up?
Are you entertaining wanting to see it?
I am.
Yeah, it's gonna be needed in the future.
Uh, I think we may have one, but before I commit, let me check and I'll get back to you.
So when-
Good idea.
But let me ask you, so would the policy, how do we, how, how do we get something put in place not only for employees, but as well as us to, to cover, um, us as well? For the council, would that just be something the council come up with and put an ordinance or a resolution in place?
I think we'd have to do something on your own for yourselves, we couldn't dictate anything. Does that make sense?
Different options that we're getting information on, state and national, to help with the decision.
A lot of cities have this, so it should be simple to find a sample policy.
The PD has a social media policy.
But this is, but this is also for-
Am I right, Rondell?
It's also for the administration, it's not, it's not restricting speech, but it's making sure that there's no disclosure of information that is-
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Alright, you, you're on the same page, we can do something for the employees, but we can't really get anything.
So do you-
But, but you can look around and find one for it.
Well, yeah, you can look around, sure.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's something, yeah, that's something I do think we would want to entertain and, um, is that something you think you guys can get by the next council meeting?
Uh, we will do our best.
Okay, and there was something else, um, that I forgot to ask, um, and it was for your department, Ms. Stephanie. Um, I know, um, a couple of weeks ago, the animal shelter ended up being closed. And I heard about it from the grapevine, so, um, and I know that's not my lane, I mean, that's your department, and as long as you, you know, coordinated with the mayor, I'm, mayor, I'm asking, is there any way when things like this happen, will we be notified? No, we be notified so that way we're not in the dark and, you know, people are calling us, asking us stuff and we can't answer questions because we don't even know.
We want you to have to, from the beginning, you know, we don't need to, you know, go on, I like to go on, I'm, sometimes. Yes, we need to contact you immediately when we have the issue, and then we'll be done.
Alright, so we are gonna, um, we are gonna, I think that covers everything.
Did we, did we discuss that?
I don't see it.
Everything, it looks like everything else in the business.
Um, number one, that's on the city council, new business, that's, um, action that is necessary to approve resolution number eighty dash twenty twenty-four to authorize allocation of gas tax revenue for the fiscal year twenty-five transportation plan must be adopted no later than August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, Alex, this wasn't on the work session, what is this one?
That's actually correct, it was on last week's task, yeah.
It sure was. It sure was, okay, alright, um, is there anything else? I forgot covered. Do you guys have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're gonna give Alex, it's five fifty-five, we're gonna, um, end the work session and we're gonna give Alex, you need about fifteen minutes?
I need to go back.